First of all, we'll welcome our guests. You want to introduce yourself?
I'm Philip Horns.
Thank you. And happy to be here. Happy to be here. And everybody here. Hello. Good. Yeah. Okay, good. Next on the agenda is Agenda Review and Revisions. Are there any revisions to the agenda? Hearing none. Public comments and correspondence. I'll just note that I did receive an email from Corinne Stridesburg with some feedback on the website. More specifically, the school board meetings and where they're located, as well as looking for policies to be online. And I forwarded that to Bill and to Aaron. And I'd ask you to just take a look at that and give some feedback on what you think and what might be possible. Do you think it's an appropriate change?
I think it depends on priorities of all the work that we're doing around here frankly, or the level of change that... It's not that much a level of change, but I think that it's back to several conversations we had with everything that we're trying to do.
Okay.
So, I believe that they're duly warranted as needed, but that's my belief.
Any other public comments or correspondence? We'll just note for the record here and for the video, future meetings, we have on December 5th is an SU Board meeting, and December 10th is our regular Berlin School Board meeting. On the consent agenda, the approval of the minutes of October 24th, that's on page two of your packet. If everyone's had a chance to take a look at the minutes, I would entertain a motion.
On the motion, approve it.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the minutes are approved. Next, we'll go to our discussion agenda, and in the interest of accommodating our guest, we can move that... I assume, Philip, that you're here for 3.6, the sports recreation program discussion?
Yes.
We can move that up and talk about that, if that's okay with everyone? All right. So, we're going to take on 3.6 first here. We were just looking for some information. Vera, you had asked for this item to be placed on the agenda, and I was wondering if we could just get... We were, I think the board was wanting to have more information about the athletic director position for Berlin. Aaron was kind enough to send along a job description.
We had your copies.
And you made some copies of that?
Yeah, there.
And I think Vera, at this point, we're just looking to gather some information because there is a possibility of joining a recreation program.
So, yeah, the conversation is asking about Eastmont players already on the rec program? And Philip can speak a little more to exactly what that looks like at Eastmont player. But... So, I think some of the struggle that we have always had with the sports program is every school runs a little differently, whether it's rules, field size, school size. Some schools have consistent refs, some don't. Some is just literally pulling somebody off the sidelines, and it always causes issues every year. And there definitely was some about this year with the whole, you know, all those things that I spoke to. There are also, were a lot of scheduling changes, and I can speak for Mike Nois that his three, four girls program were affected probably the most, where they showed up for games, there was no games, a principal canceled the game forty minutes before their game was supposed to happen. Mike nor his other two coaches ever knew about it. Regardless, I think there's just... There's so many inconsistency that the best way, as we try to do with everything else, is to all be under one umbrella. So, I think that's where Eastmont players trying to get everybody on the same playing field. And also, at the same time, this would be my vision, I think it would help the schools that don't maybe have enough numbers, which is typically Callis and always Worcester. And Eastmont players up and down depending on the programs, but from year to year, it's some boys teams they can't have because of the numbers, and some years it's the girls. So, I think if we all went into one Central Vermont rec committee or something like that, which Eastmont player already does, it could solve some of those issues that we have. So, that's kind of...
Yeah, I was going to ask you, Philip, could you tell us a little bit about what Eastmont player is doing and what you see as the benefits of that?
So, Eastmont Pillars rec board, and the brief history is that's like Berlin, which has a rec commission or something, was property management. And the property is beside the school, it involved these sports being played on it. There's other properties around town that we are under our umbrella. The youth sports element came in as Eastmont player wanted to let go. It was very, it was very easy flow, the school wanted basically the same thing, the parents and the folks on the rec board were looking at. How the actual jump made, I don't remember, but what we do now is we manage the fields, we manage the property. And then we run youth pro, three primary, up until now, three primary youth sports, soccer, basketball, and then we endorse Little League baseball. We don't actually, we have teams, we coach teams, but the program is run through Little League. We're adding something, and that's always been open to any kid in the district that wanted to come play, whether it's Orchard Valley student, one of your students would always have been welcome if there was a shortage. And we've put that out there a few times. The youth sports has become more of a primary as far as the day-to-day function, because there's always something going on. We charge a fee. We charge a $35 fee per sport. It was lower at one time, and we have had ambitious plans with the property and the programs that have put that fee where it is. Other things that set us apart, there's no, there's no direct school supervision, there's no direct school involvement, but there is a very cooperative relationship between the board and the administration in the school. We handle the scheduling of the games on that, on the soccer field that is on the school's side, so there's a property use agreement. We use the basketball court, same idea, property use agreement, and in that we've contributed the two, at least two of the basketball hoops that are in the gymnasium were something that we put up. I think we might have had something to do with the scoreboard. So, we keep complementing the equipment and resources that are needed, again, through the fees and through some money from the town. And it's, we're always flush. We're always in a black position as far as our finances. We are planning ahead more now than we have in the past. As far as purchases, we get through approval, final approval through the select board of the town, and we're under their liability.
Thank you.
They also host rec clinics for their refs, which are very helpful, because then they're consistent with what they're going to call at what age.
So, on that level, there's an, I've had an effort going for a while with soccer in particular, and the Zylingas have been very involved in the program flow there, and we're moving more and more towards a like spelled-out progression. We did it with K-2 this year. My wife Jessica helped run that program, and we put together a program where the kids were progressing, and we added onto the development throughout the year. That's been done in the past, but it's being more formalized, and I hear a call from other programs for consistency across, whether we do one program or we have a progression across that everybody shares, and it makes complete sense. There's a lot of athletic success coming out of the kids from Eastmont Pillars, and a lot of... We get, we get enough, I don't want to say a lot of, we get enough volunteer participation to make it work, and we don't. When we don't, I stand in front of the parents at the opening day, and I say, "Hey, that team's running, that team's running, that team's running. That team doesn't have a coach, we'll see them as soon as, you know, we'll see them on the field as soon as someone steps up." I never go one practice without having someone step up. We do, what else? I don't...
Do you do background checks?
We do a different background check system than you guys do. We don't do the Level 2. We run, we run names through the Vermont sex offenders, and I believe a Level 1. So, we don't require fingerprinting. We've never had anyone else that wasn't a parent step up to be volunteer either, so I don't know if that would be handled differently if volunteers came from outside the district.
Any other input or concerns that you want?
I, no, I live in a district, my kids do, it's all rec-based in it, the Morrisville, Lumale County's been rec-based for a long time. And then my kids went to Woke Elementary that had something that was done through their after-school program. So, I've lived in both worlds. I don't have, my only piece is the safety piece, and I had been told as of this afternoon there weren't any background checks in Eastmont Pillars, but I didn't know that for sure.
Where did that come from?
I'd say that came from within the system.
My board?
I'm, Philip, I'm not going to give people...
It's, we have, we have a system in place in our...
That's the only thing I want you to know as a board, that you, even though you aren't, you are responsible for kids' safety. And it's your decision on what level you, if, you know, if that happens, how you'd like, it's not your decision once it goes to a municipal piece. The standard in Washington Central is Level 2 background checks with anyone who's alone with kids. And I'm not saying that stop it, I'm just letting you know pieces of information. I'm trying to be really clear here, that's...
So, I think as this rec board is trying to like regroup within the towns, it would have two representatives from every town on this.
That's agreed upon for formation of the board. When we went from a kind of a pool of coaches working together to a more formalized form, we went to two, 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 and then we had an individual working as the leader of that group or facilitating. Bill has Travis doing it more formally now. I did it for a year, principals have done it. That the principal was the preferred, then we had someone that was sitting in the administrative position, because four of the groups were, actually at that time, three of the groups were schools, Callis was rec at one point.
And Callis came back to the school because of the background checks?
Yes, that's where I was going with that, is I do think it's an option of if that would be something that we say, "Okay, that, that is something we will not give up, we want Level 2 background checks." I don't see that stopping a town if that were, if the background checks were to be continued on as part of...
So, Vera, I could need to give you some information about VCIC. There's certain sign-offs that have to be done, and there are certain organizations, and I don't have it all committed to memory, so I'm not, not just giving you some information. I know they're very strict with who has access to Vermont. To get to a Level 2 background check, you have to be able to go through Vermont Criminal Information Center.
Yeah, I know Dynamo Soccer Club does it, and they're a rec soccer in Norfield, and they do the Level 2.
So...
And I'm not sure about...
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
I'm confused. Are you, if it's no longer in the school, we answer not to the school, and our liability doesn't go to the school, it goes to the town? Anything that happens on that soccer field for us, maybe you're...
You own the town, you own the field, as the town owns the field. Currently, I'd have to go check liability with our legal team. We would have to have, have the town include us as a self-insured through the, as a co-insured through the town's policy, and then...
So, if Onion River uses the spring...
They have to show us they have insurance, and they do.
Yeah.
And I do, I would have to check, but I'm not 100% sure. It used to be the town of Berlin has the rec committee, because they are the ones that also subsidize the swim lessons in the summertime. That half of that runs through the rec committee on the town budget, which I'm assuming would have insurance for their portion of that.
Right, I'm not saying they don't, but we need, and this is all doable, I'm just trying to get you information on the table again. So, the, when we have someone come in and use our site that's not being run by our staff, we have to have them show us their insurance with a co-insurance rider on it. It doesn't really cost them anything, but says if something were to happen, their insurance would cover first before our insurance would. So, like when Onion River comes, we ask for them to do that. They give us a letter from their, I have to ask Michelle exactly what she wants, whether it's a letter or certificate of insurance that shows us as co-insured through their policy. It's not that it's not doable, it's just, I'm just telling you what the pieces are that are part of the puzzle.
So, if the town developed a piece of property over by the mall for, and put a couple ballfields in there, that removes the problem for you guys completely?
It's not, it's not on our property, that's correct. I don't see it as being a big deal. I just want to be sure that the board's aware of these issues. I mean, they aren't, this is nothing that's a deal breaker right here, it's just the pieces that, we'd have to talk to the select board about that and get that done.
So, Philip, is it, is it just Eastmont Pillars, or is there more than one town right now?
Eastmont Pillars is the only remaining rec board. The town of Callis no longer wanted the liability, as, correct me if I'm wrong, town of Callis no longer wanted the liability that the sports programs were bringing, so they said, "School, you've got to take it back," and because the school has their liability system, with the district, it had to be school-based again.
So, they're in the opposite situation, because their fields are owned by the town, so does the school provide coverage when those students are on that field?
Yes, wherever we go with a field trip, we're covering ourselves.
So, they have a, there's some use agreement, I do not know the details between the school and the school program, and, you might know the details.
I've never even looked at it.
Yeah, okay. So, it's probably like the reverse of what I'm doing with Eastmont Pillars, is we say we're going to use the basketball court, blah, 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 here's our insurance. They're probably doing it just in reverse. Bill, does it matter where the program is based, if we had a centralized program as far as liability? If it was based in one particular, it is administrated from one particular...
Doesn't matter where, it's where the accident happens.
All right, that's what I thought.
Because what happens is if it were to be, someone were to sue, they're going to go after, a good lawyer's going to go after whoever's involved, and part of it would be the property holder.
So, we've got liability and insurance, and both are doable?
They're doable, yeah. It's all doable, it's, you know, to what...
Turning i's and crossing t's.
Yeah.
No, I, I, my recommendation is, well, no, I think you're going on the same line. I was just going to say, as much as you can remove the school from the picture, the easier it is to cooperate, in my experience, with the school.
Well, I have a question in that, in that regard too, Bill. In the context of Act 46, will this be a moot point in a year?
No, no, it's, it's, it doesn't, it doesn't matter whether the governance is one way or another, because you need to know that the school district is its own municipality, and then this town is its own municipality.
The school district, the Berlin Elementary School District, will remain its own entity?
No, but it doesn't, but it doesn't matter, you're your own entity from the town right now anyway.
Yes.
It'd be two merged boards, like our sports would be on a rec, Central Vermont rec board per se, and then the Act 46 merger would be the school.
Yeah, I mean, really, it really doesn't, it really doesn't matter whether you're merged or not, you still have the same problem.
But we would have one policy instead of five, for five towns? One policy for one unified district?
This is not a policy level, this is something to do with liability.
I don't mean school policy, I mean insurance policy.
We already have one insurance policy for the whole SU. Insurance is bought centralized already.
So, it's just a matter of stipulating the wording for the certificate of insurance for this purpose?
Yeah, there's, yes, exactly. We all, we all, we bid all our insurance together and do it all together, so it would be just, yeah.
But you're talking about, they have to, programs, the program would have to come here with their own insurance, you're not talking about covering the program through Berlin, are you?
No, 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 no. What Peter was asking is, is there, if there was a difference in governance, would it matter? Or there was one district versus the six districts, doesn't matter for this, between a rec entity, which is under the municipality, and something happening at the school, and there is no difference no matter what the governance is, it doesn't...
I was looking for a silver lining that maybe something would be simplified by Act 46.
No, the problem, the problem here is, I mean, it's not really a problem, it just makes the complexity, because when you go to something that's governed, I mean, at Eastmont Pillars, it's governed under this town. The town, even though there's a rec board, the town has the ultimate responsibility.
Yeah, yeah, we have to, we have to justify our budget and go and do our budget requests to the select board, and any major projects, like right now, we're ripping down trees and whatnot, when it goes through the select board.
But as Vera points out, we have a rec board in Berlin.
And that's how ours, that's what ours was born from, the same basic entity that did the swim lessons.
Prime to take another, another activity.
We still do the swim lessons, we just have sports now too, whereas yours is...
And so, tell me, Bill, what are the advantages of the rec structure versus the school structure?
My perceived advantage is, and I don't know if maybe I'm, you know, I don't know all the legalities that Bill has to deal with, is just the freedom of not being tied to the logistics of the school. There's all, you have programs that are in conflict with sports, you have money issues with sports. You know, I don't know what the budget is at Berlin, but I know that my soccer program pays for itself, and its equipment, and referees. And these are goals that I'm hearing from all the other programs, we want trained referees, we want coaches that are trained. I do all that, and I do it all within a budget that is always in a positive position. So, the advantage is having control over funds. The advantage for us is we have our own property, so we don't have, we can manipulate it in any way that the town agrees, versus having to go through whatever hoops it would take to redo a ballfield here, I don't know.
There you go, tie yourself, deal to the town.
Freedom and flexibility, I guess, is the two, are the big ones, I perceive.
I have one more question in the same context. You mentioned budget paid by fees, you said earlier?
Correct, we have a property management...
If children are unable to pay the fees, is there, is there a means to subsidize those costs?
Absolutely. The, in that $35 fee that we're taking in, we, we are able to take care of any scholarship that we need, and we do it without ask. You don't have to fill out a financial form. If someone asks for a scholarship, the kid plays. Someone doesn't ask for a scholarship, I'm going to ask them, "Do you need one?" If, if, there's never been a kid that hasn't played at Eastmont Pillars, and it's, yeah, it's never been a problem, and so that's, that's easy to manage.
Thank you.
So, Peter, just to give you a little history too, so Berlin was at a point where, a few years ago, when we had the fields redone, the soccer goals and nets were destroyed, and we went into our soccer season not having anything and no budget to purchase anything. So, Craig and I had reached out to Barry Shinard at Comfort Colors in Norfield, and he was very generous and offered to help out with buying, giving the money to buy two of the goals, which we purchased from Eastmont Pillars, buying the new nets for all four goals that are out there, because 3.4 has smaller goals than the 5.6. We were able to buy six ball bags, which all contained 10 soccer balls, a set of cones, pennies, a game ball, and goalie gloves. So, right now, we're in that situation again, where some of the bags have been kept very neat, everything's together, other bags are not, and we're in that situation where we had six, there's three upstairs right now. Some haven't been returned, some have, obviously. And we're in a situation now too, where we have very few jerseys that are left, and some of the jerseys that are up there have been up there for years. Whereas, if you have a program that, even if a kid needs a scholarship, and that is provided first, you would hope after a year or two of having a rec program, that you would have enough money to purchase that equipment that you need, because that's usually not one of the things that is in the budget. And I think doing the fundraising during the basketball season has been more beneficial, but we don't have the space out here to do a jamboree like Eastmont Pillars does, because they have four fields that they do the jamboree on. So, it's easier to host at Eastmont Pillars, so they do it up there.
Also makes you eligible for different types of grants that are specific to recreation. Yeah, I mean, she spoke, she spoke really well to the flex, she described about $3,000 that she would have to spend to be able to get back to four teams at par with all those balls, bags, jerseys, and updating your, updating your goals. Actually, if we update all four goals, it'd be more like $4,500. So, that's not, that's not a jump in the school budget kind of number when you have to do it. In rec, we, well, we've got, we have the funds because we planned ahead for that, and we know when we have to do the nets next, and we've got funds set aside.
So, I appreciate all the information. I think we need to try to move along in our agenda. Do you have any recommendation or proposal going forward, Vera? Any action?
No action, I think it's one of those that we need to continue the conversation as far as, you know, if this is something as the Berlin Board, as much as it would be Middlesex and Worcester, to have the same conversation as the benefits, pros the cons, you know, issues both ways. I think it, it's one of those that's been talked about multiple years for multiple different reasons. I can remember having the same conversation, whether to stay as rec or move over. I think what, the, I think the, the thing right now I see as a struggle with all the schools is the inconsistency across the board. And we say every time at our, all of our meetings, that there's so much inconsistency from school to school, whether it's the Allied Arts or programs offered, foreign language, whatever. And it's the same thing with the sports. And I think if they were all being done under one unified board and one unified rec committee, there are benefits, first and foremost, for the kids. And that's what I see as the biggest benefit, is the benefits for the kids. Because right now, for a school to have 3.4 and 5.6 all play on one team is not beneficial to any of those kids, nor do I think having a coed team is always beneficial when they're very much at different levels, at different ages. So, that would be my first and foremost, is what's beneficial for the kids for each grade level.
What it's all about.
It is. The only other question I did have, which was listed in your list of questions, and I never got a clarified answer. The last I knew, the AD position was a stipend position, and it was either $1,000 or $1,500. And now that we don't necessarily get a line-by-line in the budget, I was, I could not find if that is still $1,000.
For the Berlin?
Yeah.
I'd have to go look at it, but I think it is $1,000. But I think it is $1,000. And the same is true for the SU, for what Travis does to coordinate, to the $1,000 stipend. It has been since I've been here, it's never been changed.
That's why I wasn't 100% sure.
Right, so, I mean, part of that is, a lot of that is goodwill for the amount of hours.
Yeah, that's it, that goes as soon as stipend continues.
Yeah.
All right, thanks for coming, Philip.
Absolutely. I am, I've been available for this line of thinking, and I will make myself available anytime I can, because this has been a project of mine for 10 years, to find this window opening, and I think it's a really good opportunity, and I think Eastmont Pillars Board in general can bring a lot of experience to the table. So, we're there, if you guys stick your hand out to help.
Can you let us know if other schools take this up and are looking?
I'm hoping that the, honestly, I'm hoping that a little swell that's happening here will be picked up, and interested, I'm not trying to force on any one program.
So, two towns didn't come to the last meeting at U32, and I'm not sure, Travis was going, my understanding was Travis was going to reach out to make sure they had representation at the next rec.
One of our first goals of the district should have, should be getting back to two, two representatives from each program, so at least what we have right now can make representative decisions across. There's two from Eastmont Pillars, one person representing two schools, and Romney, when he shows up, Doty, the principal's the representative, and, you know, I know his times that he's busy. So, that would be a goal, a goal that I would ask you guys to set, was to help get back to that board of 11 people. So that would be a goal, a, a goal that I would ask you guys to set, was to help get back to that board of, uh, eleven people, counting Travis. Thank you for letting me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Matthew, was there anything in particular you're here for?
Nothing in particular, I haven't seen your agenda, but, uh, it's okay.
Alright.
I just, I just came because I'm interested in the conversations boards are having about education goals and stuff like that primarily.
Alright. Uh, going back to our discussion agenda, item three point one is our budget draft number one, which can be found on page five of your packet.
Yeah, I'm gonna actually, and I should have done this when we went over the agenda, Chris, back and forth, I'm gonna read. Talk to you a little bit all about a little bit of timeline, I was reading your minutes from when Lori was there. And I need to correct some things that Lori said in the last meeting. And then I need to go, I'll go to page nine, which is the multi-year budget information packet. And then I'll go to the budget on page five.
Alright, sounds good.
So what I wanted to do was talk to you a little bit about the budget process going forward from where we are right now. And the implications of Act forty-six and the ruling of the state board. Chris and I talked about this, but I wanted to make sure, and the executive committees talked about it, and most of the boards have it. But I wasn't sure that Berlin, and then when I read through the minutes prepping for tonight, I was like, oh, I need to correct a couple of things. So let's, you know, as you all know, the state board has made a provisional ruling for Washington Central. As we go forward through this, they're meeting this Thursday on the fifteenth and then meeting on the twenty-eighth of November possibly. And I wanted to make sure that, one of the things that with us figuring out what's happened with Act forty-six and where we'll potentially be. I want to make sure that the budget process stays as transparent as possible and does not. Even, I, I think more transparency is needed now than less than what we've done before. So in that, I shouldn't say than what we've done before, but to ensure that we have that transparency. I saw, Chris, you just pulled out the timeline for Act forty-six and I didn't bring that with me, but I kinda have it in my head here, I'm fine, I'm fine. If I say, miss say something, you can be my check for me, okay? But in the draft articles of agreement right now, the state board's gonna discuss, uh, this next Thursday. There is a provision that on November, once the state board rules. There, there are two different transitions that happen. There's a trans, there's a warning that will take at least thirty days because it's a school district meeting, so like your town meeting day. That means within thirty to forty days, a new transition board will be brought aboard. And their primary responsibility is to prepare a budget to be recommended to a new board that will be elected on town meeting day. So if we were forced to merge, that means there is not a budget vote on town meeting day. And that there will be one at a later date.
Because the new board is elected on town meeting.
The new board is elected on town meeting and the new board has the responsibility of presenting a budget to the new district electorate. To vote on that budget before, ultimately before June thirtieth, the recommendation is before May first. Because if the budget were to be defeated, you want at least one time to be able to have a revote. So with that being said, one of the things I want to make sure is that we're still, and back in August, when the executive committee met. We determined that the best thing to do was to develop the budgets the way we have been developing the budgets, that means by entity or by school. And bring those together and not look for, uh, possible savings, but just bring all those together to the transition board. And bring the information to the transition board, then the transition board would bring that information and present that information to the new board. So as, when, if the state board rules as they provisionally ruled. The, as, let's say the date is November twenty-eighth and the, the schedule, and Peter, you can take a look at the one copy that's there. Is that there would be, as of that date, the responsibility for FY twenty, which is our next fiscal year. Resides with the new board all the way in March. So anything that has to do with FY twenty goes all the way to there. I still think it's good for us to bring budgets to this board, this board still has operational responsibilities to June thirtieth. And then probably one or two board meetings after that, because you, this board needs to accept the auditor's report. Uh, in the draft articles, it says that the local boards would need to stay standing until December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. After that, if they're not, and we're still waiting for audit reports, they can go to the new board. So my plan, and I've presented to the chairs and to the executive committee, and I've received favorable feedback. But would like your feedback as well, is that we would bring, we're gonna present you a budget tonight that's level service. With adjustments for student needs, we, that's what you have in your packet, we'd love feedback on that. I will do the same again in December, would like feedback. January, we won't need to, if you remember, January meetings get pretty compact because there usually was a town meeting day report. So there probably won't be a report in the town report if we get merged. Because there'll need to be a new report made of the whole entity. Still trying to figure that one out and I really won't have that decision for a little while. So then we would be giving all that information to a transition board for whatever they see and they would take it from there. So I'm trying to gather the feedback, so it all goes to the transition board and then the transition board would take it up from there and get it to the new board.
So realistically, we could have, we could be great with this budget you've presented tonight as a Berlin board, recommend it. It gets handed to the transition board, it gets handed to the new board, new board could just go in and change it.
They could, I don't foresee that happening because in Bill's mind, and I wanna say it that way, in my mind. I see the transition board is made up of the clerk and the chair from each board. And then I have a feeling, but I'm not sure because I can't predict the electorate, that probably the new members on the new board. Will come from a lot of the members we have seated already. I can't say that that's gonna happen, but my intuition is telling me that's probably what will happen. I don't know to degree and like what percentage or any of that, but I would think that much, many of her, so you have a lot of the same people sitting there around the table throughout. So I think doing the work as we go is, that's what I can foresee.
That's, that's been my assumption until recently, the more I think about it, I wonder if we'll have candidates out there running, not against us. But as people that are just totally dissatisfied with the whole business and end up with ten new people.
That's a policy, that's a proba- possibility, not a policy, a possibility. I, I've thought of that too, Peter, yeah, I really have.
It's really hard to, to imagine what could happen.
What could happen, yeah.
But I think we have to deal with what we can deal with.
That's kind, that's the pragmatic part that I've been trying to deal with, like what can I deal with, what can I deal with, how can I help advise the boards and move forward and keep the system moving forward, so. But that's been my thought.
So it's, it's probably not helpful to spin hypotheticals like this, what might happen. But what if one, I'm just trying to imagine one town being way out of line in spending and increases as compared to the other four towns? And, and how that plays out.
So, so let me tell you where we are right now. So I think actually that should play into your articles of agreement and hint, hint, I would go look at Champlain Valley Unified Union. Because they have a nice way, they talk about doing budgets there and spending and not necessarily what the spending is out of alignment, but what's needed for, based on students. And they have a nice policy there of things that superintendent has to put in place for when they do their budgeting.
And their program has been accepted.
Oh, yeah, they've been merged for a year, over a year now.
On that line, at the, at the debt committee, I hate that term, but, um. I think you mentioned, somebody mentioned that we would receive, um, information on CVU or.
Yeah, and I haven't given it back, so thank you for reminding me, yeah, I gave it to the Articles Committee, I forgot to get it to the Debt Committee. So thank you, Peter, for that reminder, that Champlain Valley School District Articles to Debt, yeah.
Sorry, I gotta stop track there, Bill.
So, um, I, what I was gonna say, Chris, is. As an expenditure budget right now, every school is around three percent or below, and I say around, like within like. Two tenths of a percent at most, above three percent. The low is East Montpelier right now, they're below two percent and so is the SU budget is below two percent. So there, we've got, you know, I, I asked the principal, I said, so when looking at your level service budget, tell me if you can't do it outside of that. Now, the impact on taxes is different because two of our towns are losing small schools grants, both Doty and Callis. And on top of that, Callis is losing their eligibility for Title One funding. So they're gonna lose quite a bit there, they actually lose more on that than they do in small schools grant. Because title, their, the students they serve are no longer, they no longer have the percentage to be eligible for Title One funding like Berlin is. And the way Doty is. So their, their net impact on taxes is different. But their overall expenditures are under that three percent.
And that doesn't take into account, won't take into account any of the redistributed debt?
Well, there's that, but here's the other thing, we've had some shifting students and I don't have that finalized. But we have shifting student enrollment, so that, even if we didn't have the shift in debt, we'd have shifting assessments and costs and all that. Because of just student population changes.
You talking shifting debt, Chris, based on the Act forty-six?
Yes. So, so those are all the, those are the, I just wanted to give that timeline, um, Barry, you've just been quiet, so I wanted to give you a chance if you had any questions.
Oh, I'm just, it's so hard to live in the hypothetical of what is very important, because I feel like it's all gonna be a moot point in the end to have this. Regardless of what we support and put forward, it really is up to the new board and it's, it's hard to make a decision here and now with what's gonna happen in March and April.
But I think, I believe that all three of you, and if Carl were, I'd say with him too, him as well. Uh, that all four of you are influencers at least in the town, and I know, I know that. And you're big supporters of education, so I think it's worth to get your feedback.
I'm, I'm good with the budget, I, I go back to our board goals in my own personal philosophy with our kids here at Berlin. That I just, I would love to see the progress moving more, especially in math. And how we do that and how much money we're willing to spend to do that is a question.
So the executive committee asked us about that in November? Yeah, that's right, you were there, you were there for us, you heard that discussion, I don't have to repeat it then. But I should for Peter at least, and Chris has heard it before, is that the executive committee brought a pretty, uh, we brought. Uh, a budget that was one point nine six from the SU. And we know that the consumer price index right now is for September was three point three percent for the past twelve months. And that the government and, uh, government and educational services is two point nine, this is all New England region. So after saying those for context pieces, which I was gonna say to you as a board as well. I was asked to go back and look at what needs are hap- that are needed to increase student outcomes. I mean, you all just had a student outcome, we do it purposely this way, so we, so you have some, you can see that before you get into the budget discussions. So from that, um, the leadership team's actually working most of tomorrow on that. We're working from eight to two to answer that question for the, you know, what more is needed as in resources? And then, um, you know, we're gonna come back on the twentieth to say that to the executive committee. But I think that'll probably influence even some on the fifth of what is it that we need? Is it money, is it time, time is a cost, we all know that. And then, um, or is it a way that we reconfigure how we look within our buildings? And I think it's gonna be A, B, and C in different ways.
So is this an area that we might, under ordinary circumstances, be recommending perhaps a greater expenditure for math?
You might.
Whereas right now, we're trying to maintain a level budget because of.
No.
Going into Act forty-six.
I'm not saying that because of Act forty-six, I want you to know what those costs are and are they, you know, what are they? And, you know, some of them aren't cost money wise, but they're cost in changing the system, which sometimes takes some political, you know, it takes some education piece. For everybody to understand why we're making those changes.
Would you say changes, Bill, just for my own?
So like, say we were gonna change the schedule.
Like schedule, okay.
Say we were gonna change teaching assignments, say we were gonna change classroom loads, and all this is hypothetical, okay? Say we were gonna change, um, unified arts, say we were gonna change, uh, time of the school day. You know, we have, we're in school from nine thirty to three thirty, so it's six and a half hours. We deal with a thirty-seven and a half hour work week for teachers. Uh, we, it's actually really nice that we have it as a work week, cause that allows us to be flexible with teachers, more flexible and actually meet needs. So, you know, we might staffing patterns, all that. Those are the different ones that aren't time, but are educational because. School is one of the big community grounding places, it's a rock for the community. And so when you try to change something, you have to work with people about that change. And it takes time to do that.
Anything else you want to present on the budget?
Not on the overall, I would say on page, I'm gonna not do, I'm not gonna walk through things that you can read, but I want you to tell you on page nineteen. There's some big, and you might remember these from years past, Peter. Big keys that we use into building the budget, so there's like, what's one penny on the tax rate for Berlin in the current configuration? What's one percent on the expense budget? We'll get this more defined because I can't, I don't really wanna give you taxes right now, Lori always, when I push her in November, she's like, come on. We need to get some of these things clear before we get, we need to get into December, Bill.
These are helpful keys, though.
Those are helpful keys, I wanted to point out that page to you, and I'd like to say that you have a, I think, I believe on page five. You have a three point zero four and there are some shifting student needs that are shifting some changes in par educators that were needed for this year. So we were able to put those into this budget, they weren't in the past budget, we were able to absorb them in the past budget. But the reason I need to tell you that these changes are a comparison of this year's budget with next year's budget, so it's not actuals. We already have that one point six FTE par educator, as you can see, FY eighteen nineteen, we hired those this year. We're expecting more revenue because of that, but they weren't in the budget, so the budget to budget comparison is a hundred and six thousand dollars increase. Or three point zero four percent, and that's with healthcare in there, salaries, um, there's an estimate in there for negotiations for that salaries. And then assessments for Washington Central at three percent. As you know, Vera, you were there at the meeting, we were, we had recalculated assessments, we will be doing that for you in December with the new distribution of students. Because last year, if we recall, all assessments now are based on the child count, the percentage of child count based on ADM. So we'll refresh that for the December budget. That's about as short a budget presentation I've ever done. I'd be glad to take questions, detail, anything you want, but I'm giving you where we're at.
So I'd like to bring up some things that are, would also fit under the Act forty-six discussion, and I know you'll have a perspective on these. It may differ from what we, I think we have a responsibility to consider as Berlin school board members as opposed to looking at the best interest of the entire district. And we might decide things in a way that are in the best interest of the district, but I think we also have to take a look at our. I'm thinking of our capital fund and our reserve fund, I'm curious as to whether you know if other boards are considering spending that before consolidation.
So they're talking, they're talking about it, it's the actual, can you do it? And I've had this conversation with two boards and I, and someone said, well, we'll just pay upfront. And I said, well, you can do that if you'd really like to, but I don't advise it as your superintendent, cause whenever we have work done. You want some money held back to make sure the work happens and that it's correct.
That's a good point.
So I think, and I would tell you that most of the, the big ticket items that are, that you would, might wanna do under your capital fund. And I have a report based on the closing out the construction that I'd need to give you, which I was gonna give you under your fiscal. But I mean, we've had this conversation at Doty, we've had this conversation at, at Middlesex, and I'm like, you gotta not, you can't do the work with kids in the building. So you gotta get to a point where you don't have kids and usually that's summertime.
And what's your understanding of when time runs out on this board's ability to. Direct funds from its budget to be spent on something like a parking lot or a driveway?
June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Invoices must be in, Lori would like me to say, because I know the process of shutting down the budget starts May first. That she likes to have all invoices in, usually by June first is what the buildings get told. You know, if we know it's something coming like a field trip or something like that, we flex for that, but we really, you know, we're in shutdown mode. Starting May first and we shut down everything June first.
Again, speaking in hypotheticals, if this board put out an RFP for the driveway and committed that money in May. put out an RFP for the driveway and committed that money in May or whatever it was, even though it wouldn't happen until school was out, the kids were gone, wouldn't happen in June or July or August even. After June thirty, could the new board?
Would it stop on it? Yep, they could. But I think there are ways to do things. I mean, this is what I've been trying to say to everyone. I think we're getting too nervous, might be the right word. And it's that, how do we put trust into the work in which we're doing going forward?
Sure. That's, it is, yeah. And I think that's difficult, even though we're being forced to do it.
I think it's, we're putting trust in the unknown and the unknown who's. I think that's the hard part. I mean, if it was known for the first year, that two of us would definitely be on that next board and not just going out for reelection on.
So that's what, that's what, I think that's a discussion you should have, frankly. I, I'm just gonna be really transparent with you. I think we have a lot of fear, just as you said, of the unknown. How do you make a process that says we're trusting of the work? Because here's what the principals have said to me quietly. They're like, we're rushing to do things that won't be done well. And so if we go, how do we, every year, we've always had it, we've, this job, district has done a great job of build, of saying, we're trying to build capital plans, which we've been doing. We're trying to get work done to improve our buildings. We've been doing that really well over the past five to eight years across the district, some more than others. How do we ensure a system that does it thoughtfully going forward? So there's a piece, you know, and, and that has been considered by other districts when they've done merging. How do you do that? Some have just gone to the, we're gonna spend every penny. Some have said, you know, we're gonna find a way to do that and maybe make agreements in how that works to the best of your ability.
For comparison, what does each of the schools have for a capital fund already?
If you gave me a minute, I would like to get my laptop up and I can look at my budgets.
So maybe while Bill is doing that, we can take a look at the.
And maybe I left my laptop at my office. I must have left it at my office.
So I just kinda threw that out there. I don't know what Pete or Vera, what you think about use of our capital fund or our reserve fund prior to merger.
I could tell you that it's something that I think all the schools have talked about in the context of the debt committee. Because there are varying levels of.
You got to log out.
Capital funds. And they all have different ideas. Whether they will, whether they won't, and what they will use it for, what they would like to use it for.
And my, my thought process would be, let's do something consistent. Like if we're all gonna spend it, then let's all, you know, like, it's too hard if one comes with X amount in their capital fund that they're contributing now S U wide, and all the other four schools decided to spend others. Like, I think there needs to be some consistency there and some agreements of either we're all gonna spend or we're all gonna save it and pool it in one pot, like. I think when you have.
That's one of the pieces of any equation that we come up with as a district for customizing our, our consolidation plan, you know, when we talk about trying to equalize budgets and account for capital funds and different tax rates and different.
So at the debt meetings, do you feel like you're getting closer to a point where you guys are agreeing to?
I think we're still gathering information, and we have time, I believe, for two more meetings before our deadline, which is not a whole lot, to put together three different plans. So we're trying to gather as much information as possible and taking significant amount of Laurie's time. But capital budgets have been talked about, but no decision has been reached on how we might.
Yeah, we gave the overall assets and liabilities to the last meeting.
We had that information, right?
Yeah, but that didn't have just capital. I mean, it had all the assets and liabilities.
Assets and liabilities without any kind of appraisal or anything, you know, it's it's best numbers available today.
Without an appraisal of the property or the buildings?
Without a professional appraisal, which might be very different from any other numbers we have. But if, our thought, I think, is safe to say if we all use the same criteria, then at least we'll have relatively equivalent numbers.
So when you talk about agreements, Bill, you're saying that the the schools could agree on how to use their capital funds, how to use their reserve funds?
In theory, in theory, I, I wanna go check out, I have to check with our attorney. When you move from one org to another, can the org say, hey, like Calis, I just looked up, has a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in their capital fund? Can they designate that that amount of money is for the Calis Elementary School building? Can we make that agreement?
And you might find that none of that is legally binding on any board.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that. I go ask Patty, Patricia, who works for Scott, who's starting to take over some of this work and has with other merged districts. I don't know what, what happened in the bat, in the pack, if you can make those type of agreements or not.
I mean, that's gonna do a lot, I would think, for trust.
Under the financial piece of the articles, if it's in there, the new board doesn't have to follow what is in the agreed upon articles, like, I would think that could be.
The articles, the new board has to agree about what's in the articles themselves. Unless they, unless there's a way to change those and the draft articles of agreement say which ones can be changed and which not, and then any new articles.
Are you talking the interim board or the new board?
Ah, the new board.
The new board.
The new board.
But we've been told many times that the articles cannot cannot deal with the debt.
Right, the debt, the debt, assets and debts. Assets and debts, sir.
So you can't put a dollar amount to be spent within one school district?
That, I don't know the answer to that. If you're coming in with assets, if you can say reserve assets, like in Eastmont Pile, there's a Jonathan Miller Fund for, and if there's, it specifically has been designated by the voters. That has to be used in that method. I do not know how that works on the capital funds. If they're, because of, originally there was voter approval to set up these capital funds. So you see, that, that, that I don't know and I haven't.
As far as trust, if we here are talking about the possibility of, for example, a paving project that we could let out before into the school year, but which can't be completed until after the school year, then this current board would be trusting the interim board, if I'm not mistaken, to sign off on that.
Well, I think if it was a paving project, and I could be wrong with this, if school's out by June twentieth, at the latest.
The hardest part right now is getting the contractors. They're already setting up their work. They're so busy right now. I don't know if you're seeing this with your work. Cause you do service, right? You don't install.
No, we do installs.
Yeah, so, I mean, what we're seeing from, I mean, we're going for bid right now for an elevator at U thirty-two, and we're about to go out for a boiler bid for Middlesex for next summer.
Well, there are contractors and there are contractors. We're talking paving contractors here. They're just finishing this season. And if, I mean, all things being equal, we decided promptly for, to get on their list for end of June is what you're talking about.
Yeah, I was saying.
Possibly before July first.
Where you get on their schedule.
You know, I think it's feasible.
Yeah.
My question was, beyond that, was somebody expressed a concern about the new board changing the decision of this board, but I would be comfortable, because I'm looking at the new board, I think.
Well, the only transition board.
Transition board, okay, but.
But come March, on the town ballot.
Your bill's gonna come before March, so.
Yeah, the other part that's there is that you have to, the new board has to honor all contracts, either, you know, HR, like my personal contract, or contracts that are already set in place. So here's an example. Middlesex has got a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, thank you, Aaron, in their capital fund. They were supposed to replace their oil boiler, which they didn't do in their bid this past summer. They got really high bids, so decided to go, because they went out really late. So we're going out in the next month for an oil boiler replacement at Middlesex. I'm gonna tell them, do it during the summer, don't do it, you know, don't try to squeeze it in, get it done during the summer. You know, so right now, Calis has a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in their capital fund. Eastmont Pile is seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. DODI has ninety-one thousand, and Middlesex has a hundred and forty-four. You have, I didn't look yours up because it was here in the report. You currently have a hundred and eighty-three, which there'll be another sixty-three hundred coming in off of interest earned through the construction project and closing out the bond. This always happens. At the end of a bond, there's money flowing one way or another. And really, that's left from the interest income. So you'll have about a hundred and ninety thousand, let's say. There's also, I didn't say in these, I didn't look them up, but I would, I'd rather take some time to do some research. There's a million dollars at U thirty-two in capital. They're about to build a new track, which is gonna cost that much. And they have some big other ticket items coming. There's, you know, there's what's the yearly contribution out of the budget to transfer to capital? Where most of these funds have been done is, have been funded is in what's left over at the end of the year. And that's pretty common in schools, that most capital funds, the electric makes a a capital fund, and most of those are excess above what's needed for cash flow. What you always hear is the four percent carry. And I, and you have excess money in your current budget of, you're about a hundred and eight, a hundred and nine thousand dollars right now over the four percent piece, which I was gonna suggest you put into your capital reserves. You know, as you're looking at driveway, I mean, the Middlesex is doing the same thing. They didn't get everything that they had wanted to do through their bond projects, so they're, they've got some roofs that they finished pretty much this year. They have a big gym project that needs to be done. They didn't tackle the gym the way you did. They know they need a new floor, they need new paving, they need new painting in there, they need new lighting.
I, I threw driveway out there, but we've got, we've got kitchen work.
Kitchen work, yeah, all that, all that stuff. So, I mean, if you wanted to say, hey, there are things we wanna do next summer, just as we've done every, and Bill Ford asked me the other day, because he works for the Burlington School District and they just passed a seventy million dollar bond. So he's like, how far are you gonna? He does, he, he only services about three or four school districts right now because he's getting consistent work and he likes to work for the people he does. You need a clerk of the work for these types of things.
He's hands full there.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Bill.
Matt, did you have something or not?
Well, I just wanted to ask a question. I think since we're, you're talking about hypothetical, that I just wanted to throw another hypothetical out. Which is, we don't know who's gonna be on a new board. But it's, at least in theory, it could be two of the three Berlin board members in this room that could be serving on that board. Knowing that, you know, Romney is setting aside a hundred and forty thousand dollars for a boiler project.
Sixty-five for the boiler.
Sixty-five for the boiler, okay. And he's got some other things on his list. DODI's got siding work and windows, things it wants to do. I'm sure every school has certain things that are on the docket that anybody could tell a new board. You're on the new board, it's July, you're at your first meeting, what do you do? You say, well, screw their capital plans, we're just gonna do whatever we want with this money and like, figure out, you know, from here how we go. I don't think that's really how it's gonna play out. I just don't see, you know, a board coming in. And even the AOE's, like default articles of agreement envisioned nothing really changing in the school system for at least two years in terms of grades served and building and operated and all that kinda stuff. And by the time you get two years down the line, you know, probably whatever we see right in front of us at the moment for capital projects, there's gonna be all new things on those lists anyway. So I just don't, when I think about it, I don't really sort of, I, I often fail to find sort of a rationale for, for like panic or concern, I guess. Yeah, you can't guarantee what another group of people's gonna do. You can't, but, I mean, it stands to reason that it would probably play out pretty much, you know, how you've got a plan now or whatever's on your, your sort of, in your pipeline. That's just what I, because it's come up at DODI, we've had people, we've had board members suggest that it's our responsibility to, we levy taxes to raise money to do capital projects, we go to our taxpayers to see if that happens here. But I just don't, I just don't see a board going in a radically different direction, you know, right off the bat or something like that. Thanks.
Thank you. Questions for Bill on the budget?
Any comments or feedback? I would, would really like to have some, but if you don't, that's fine too.
I guess I gave you my feedback, but I think that's gonna come at the next executive committee.
Right, we have to do some work.
And then a follow-up at our December board meeting.
When do you need feedback, for example, on, on the capital fund? Or transfers into it?
Well, I like this, well, the transfers in, we should, we should do soon, I think. Because I think that's only prudent money management to say that we're putting in there for capital and that somewhat locks. To me, there's somewhat of a commitment there. You know, as your superintendent and whoever I'm serving, whether it's one board or all six boards, I've heard pretty loudly from the communities, keep these buildings in good shape and do it in a fiscally responsible way. I believe the money that's there, in my own belief, talking for myself, my own belief is the monies that come in at this point are really dedicated for that school. I also think that we can actually probably do some better money management in the future as one combined board. Because there's less of a rainy day fund. We have a high rainy day fund right now. So we're.
Is that a line item, rainy day?
No, it is. It's called our, it's called your, when you look at the bottom of your financial report, it's called the projected ending fund balance and the target we want for the current year. I don't believe that we need four percent of the total SU budget. And that's kinda what we're holding right now across all the buildings.
Which, that was another question that came up at the last executive committee meeting.
Right, I believe.
What is the right percentage?
Right, and I, and I said, in my response to you, well, I need to go back and work on that. I don't know what that is right this second, but I don't believe that. When you look at the combined report that you give when we have parallel meetings, that's a pretty high line. I don't think we need all that. What I wanna do is go back and look at some trends in spending.
I do, this kinda brings us into the next session of budget meeting.
Sure.
Planning and the community engagement and I do think it's it's so important to try to inform our communities as much as possible. And I feel like over the years, as much as we try, it's still windows down every single year to nobody attending. But I, I do think there's so many changes that are coming about that it's so important to have a couple of budget meetings set aside just to talk about budgets and even the timeline of like the Act forty-six stuff and how the Act forty-six stuff is gonna affect our budgets and educate people as much as we possibly can as a collective group. I mean, I don't wanna go, I mean, I can go door to door and tell, you know, hand out flyers or tell people, but I want people to be informed from a group of us that's, they are getting the same information and not different information from going door to door. So I do think it's really important to have a couple of those budget meetings slash some Act forty-six timelike, timelines and how that's, like where that's at. Cause even the day I went to go, I had a few people that came up and said, what's going on? And I'm not on the debt committee and nor am I on the other committee that you're on. So I, I don't, I mean, I know what I know from our big meetings, but that's about it. So I can't really answer those questions for people like where we are at this moment, and it changes.
Do you think we need, do we need to do that before the, I've been kinda waiting as a superintendent, just with the staff, because I've had, I asked the principals the other day, I said, hey, do I need to come out and do a, you weren't there, actually, this was a different group, but, just not because, we were at the training last week and there were three principals, so like, do I need to come out and do an Act forty-six update now? And they said, no, wait until you know what the board rules on.
Yeah, and I'm thinking like after December, like after our next. Yeah, and I'm thinking like after December, like after our next regular board meeting.
Yeah.
Doing a something.
Yeah, cuz I, I was writing down.
So I was thinking like somewhere December fifth through like the fifteenth or.
I was thinking that timeline document you just looked at, we'll have it down to one column, but what are the implication, kind of an FAQ.
Yeah.
Document that's maybe one or two pages that says, here are the implications.
And by then you'll have more consistent numbers for the.
Yeah.
Budget, so that's just my thought on it, I feel like that's a huge part that is on us to take care of.
So you're not talking so much as ramping up for town meeting by way of explanation, you're talking about when we arrive at a budget. Kind of informational, Act forty-six budget. Forum.
I think. In this moment, I'm saying both, but I think we'll know more once we know where we are after that timeline of December or November fourteenth.
Fourteenth, it's now fifteenth or twentieth, they just moved it the other day to one day later.
I think it's important for people to know though, that they might not have, most likely won't have a school budget on town meeting day to vote on, like it will be later on. This is what we're looking at for our town, but, you know, that's gonna change as other towns, what they do.
Yeah, that's, that's a significant change or potentially.
Right, and I think having those meetings where people can come in, you know, hear about what's. The changes that are coming down the pipeline, the more we prepare our town, the better off we will be.
Great.
It's a difficult time of year to get anybody together, I'm afraid.
I do, I agree with that, but I think at the same time, knowing that there's so many changes, I think people will. Will come.
Because it's a hot topic.
Especially knowing Berry City and Berry Town just voted theirs down again, so I think it's so important for us to make sure that people are. As educated as we can.
Definitely worth doing.
Provide them information. Trust me, I don't wanna be at any more meetings in December than I have to do, but I feel like it's my, our role as the school board to do as much as we can.
But you think that the timing on that is gonna be December, wait until the rulings out?
I do, I, I mean, people can start requesting absentee ballots like right after the town report is printed and that's January and I think we're already pissed.
And here's the thing, I don't know if we'll be in the town report. That's one of the questions I still have.
Right.
So I think we have to get something out that says where we're at, because if you open the town report and don't see a school section that you're used to seeing. Like what's going on is gonna be the question. So there needs to be some sort of letter and understanding.
As soon as they can vote that day, they're voting.
Right.
To get it done, they just want it done off their list.
So there's at least a letter in there or something, but I, I mean, that's what I've been trying to think about, like what is the town report? That's a question I still have.
Half of it's the school budget. School report. So that would be a really key topic for that kind of a meeting, is just to let people know, if, if in fact. There won't be a, a school budget in the, in the town report, why and what we have in lieu of that. And we might have to do that again. In April or February.
Oh yeah, I think it's a couple of times.
I think it's a couple of times.
So we have an agenda item down here for budget meetings planning, did we wanna try to set a few dates or is it too early at this point?
So your, your next meeting is, I just wanna go over the calendar here.
Yep.
On the traditional way that we're set, not, cuz all we have is, you just see, you just see December tenth. But let me get up my calendar, so in January, the normal, the regularly scheduled meeting would be. January fourteenth. And then usually February's a carousel, but that might be, you need another one on the eleventh?
Yes, I think so.
Yeah, you know, so. Not that there can't be others, I'm just trying to give some, what the normal routine is. Normally it would be a carousel on the twentieth. But, you know, the transition board is, that, you can look at the dates there, I don't even remember without looking at that document, Chris, but, you know, the transition board gets spun up somewhere. I, I would, if I were gonna be a betting person, I would bet the state board's not gonna rule until the twenty-eighth. But I'm, I don't have any inside knowledge which way they're gonna go.
So right now we'll hold the January fourteenth and February eleventh for community forums for the budget.
What date did you say? January fourteenth or February eleventh?
And February eleventh, our regular scheduled.
Yeah.
Meetings here. All right. And Bill, just in terms of general feedback, I'm fine with this draft, level service, right around three percent. So far, so good.
Okay.
Knowing that we might wanna have some additional focus on what it might take to improve math scores.
Yep. I know Aaron's been thinking about it, he had some things, but.
Anything else on the budget? All right, we'll move on to item three point two, board member vacancy update. I had one person reach out and express interest and I followed up and that person did not get back to me after that, so. As far as I know, we don't have any candidates for the vacancy. I can put out another front porch forum post, just reminding folks that there's a, there is a vacancy and encouraging. Someone to step up and do it, but I don't know what kind of luck we'll have with that. Item three point three. The SU Board Goal Three, Community Engagement. And the Communications Plan Strategy, I think, I'm trying to remember, at the last meeting, I think we tabled that item. I think the executive committee was going to take that up at some point, but maybe that's dropped down on our priority list. Wasn't taken up at the last executive committee meeting, was it?
Not when I was there, but I actually thought the way we left our last meeting when we had a carousel meeting at U thirty-two is that we would. I thought there was gonna be a subcommittee of some kind and maybe it was the executive committee. For. The communications piece, so that everybody was getting again the same consistent information. But I'm not sure that that came up at the executive committee.
I thought we discussed it there at the last executive committee meeting, but I can't remember.
The last time I remember is October, which we were kinda saying, hey, things are on hold right now, let's.
Basically, we, when we adopted the goal, we kinda said, well, who's responsible, we said the boards. You know, so nobody's really in charge of driving this forward and like, put here and away, and. What I can remember from the last time the executive committee touched on it was that. You know, we have so much other stuff going on right now, we probably can't, you know, make this a priority. To adopt something consistent, you know, system wide. Maybe that was our October twenty-fourth night, or, yeah.
Yeah, the meeting before that, the week before that, yeah.
So does anyone here on this board have a desire to, to work on a strategy at this point in time? Either specific to the budget or Act forty-six or more in general? I just, I am. Any suggestions, any discussion? We'll leave it tabled for the moment if there's not.
I think so.
Then we'll move on to item three point four. Warranty work update?
Yeah, before we, I'm gonna let Aaron talk to most of this cuz he's been looking at things, but I just wanted to give you a couple of things from the contract. There are two different things talked about in the contract, there's the warranty, which says, we as the owners will go back to the contractor within the first. Year or two, I can't remember which one it is, for any items that need to be adjusted in the building. The other thing is, what is the general contractor? What, how far are they to, how long do they have to repair defects? And that's a second part of the contract, we, your attorney that does construction wrote our contract for us. And the general contractor is on the hook for six years for any defects that happen under construction. That should, that came as a result of the construction, not of use, but because they weren't installed correctly. So say these lights stopped working, we could go back to them and say, you need to fix this. And they need to do that. That always, the contractors always like to talk about warranty, but we actually put a defect clause in. We don't have to go back to them to fix it, but we can, and they're on, if it was because it was done wrong during construction.
And items like a roof would have a longer warranty and you would have.
They actually, that's, that's a different piece, you're exactly right, Peter, we have a warranty that just came in and Aaron got it through email. For how long the, this roof was warranted, I forget the terms, I haven't had to deal with it, I hope I never do. But it's good to have that warranty if you go back to those folks, and those you get separate, things like roofs, you get separate warranties cuz of what water can do to the building. And we asked for that under the construction. So, I don't know what's left still on the punch list, you wanna go through that, Aaron?
I talked to Bill directly, Bill Ford. The renovation project that was done before I came is, is clearly done. The roof project is complete, that's been signed off. The heat, what, a couple of outstanding things that were still lingering, outstanding. Was the heat register in the main office, which was actually done today. And then there's a bank of lights in the, kind of the primary wing that. Since, since the summer, since I started was, has been out and. I don't think it was noticed right away until, I think after school started, when I was like, how come these lights are, this bank is always out? So when we looked into it, TMI.
Yep.
Then come back, it's coming back.
That lighting, TMI is something mechanical.
Yeah.
Okay, no, no, not, not TMI, sorry. But our electrician.
Electrician that was part of that.
Yep, that, that, that it is gonna come and remedy that, so, that's the only thing that is, is left. Everything else has been, been done.
And Wayne's been really good to work with and we call him and ask him for something, they get down here and take care of it. The flooring might be the thing that we might be thinking of cuz we've seen some of our floor, but they came back and did some of that work this summer.
That was my question in October was, there were some flooring spots. And I had asked if it was done over the summer, but Lori was sure.
Right, and those are things that were, you know, we're, because we've had some issues with the floor and the flooring subcontractor. You know, they come back and take care of it.
Lynn's room and the, what is now the reading intervention room was done before school started. I think it'll be obviously, from when we see. Spring and summer, what happens to those tiles in, in every room to see what might be happening, what might continue to happen that's not good and. We can, we can fix it.
So the three big things that I've been taught through different building renovations are roofs, floors, controls. Other things you're tracking down for a little while. And you hope you never get to the roof. That's why I really liked what we did for this roof, which is just put it right over, glue it down.
Right. We had talked at, at one time. About trying to document some of the savings from the renovation.
We did last year when we were talking about just the energy savings and then we've turned that into your transfer into the capital fund of thirty thousand dollars.
That's good, I just think it's good to keep that in mind and maybe. Remind the taxpayers as to what benefits we have gotten from the renovation. And you said there were, what was it, sixty-three hundred or something like that?
See, that was the interest earned and we never budgeted for it, so we just transferred that into your capital fund.
So is there anything left on the bond, any?
Done, it's closed out.
Money is spent down to the last penny.
You signed the last piece in there tonight.
All right.
Because it has to be spent by December. You're doing the last piece.
All right. Any other questions on the warranty work? Very good, move on to three point five, which is Act forty-six. Maybe, Peter, if you could give a quick update on the work of the debt committee, you've already done some of that, and I can give a quick update on the. Articles committee, although I missed the last meeting, I did read the minutes today.
Okay, we, we discussed our charge again at the most recent meeting last week. And it's clearly to develop three options for sharing of assets. In, in hopes that those can be entered into an agreement as, as an amendment, amendments are permitted. And we're working with, with information on, on assets and liabilities for each school. And I. Personally think we're spending a lot of time talking about, you know, what if, well, we have to pay more and we have to pay less and we all recognize that, and I think that's a given and that's probably why we're having the conversation, but. We, I think we recognized at our last meeting that we have to look at the numbers that we have available to us and any, any others that we're able to, to gather that are. Information that we can cite and stand behind. And develop these three options. And we will be meeting this week.
I believe it's the nineteenth if it hadn't gone out by fourth, thirty, it's after, when I talked to Krista, I know, it was either the nineteenth or twentieth is what she said, she goes, which one do you like, I said, I like the nineteenth.
And the following week and then twelve, five, I have as WCSU board decision. So we would have to give them the three options by, prior to that date. Does that sound right?
I think it's, you know, reporting back to the board, I would say, that's what you were asked to do by the fifth, is to bring three options, if I remember the twenty-four, meaning the twenty-four.
By the, by the.
By the fifth.
So there is a, a printout that came from WCSU central office with assets and liabilities that we've been working from. For every school. My capital fund line doesn't agree with the numbers that you cited tonight, but this is from the eighth.
That's from, it's also, that's from, it was given to you on the eighth, but those are all the fund balances as of June thirty, two thousand seventeen, so the end of last fiscal year.
And yours are more current.
Mine are more current, mine were taken off the latest reports given to boards.
And. I think there are as many questions at the committee level on values of deferred maintenance items. As they are in values of capital fund, and capital fund is, is what it is for each school. We can determine a value for that, but deferred maintenance is more subjective. We have things like paving that we, I would consider deferred maintenance. That we could conceivably put a value on, we could put a guesstimate on it, we'd probably have some numbers. From your earlier conversations in the, from the project, and, and the other schools likewise for boilers and. Siding and whatever, whatever, which may be factored into one of these or all of these equations.
So on that list, when it's assets, do you have a dollar amount, I know they haven't been assessed as far as a true assessment. But what is the assessed number that is on Berlin for the building and land?
So Berlin is a little bit of a, it has not been reassessed by the town and it hasn't been done through our audit yet. It's just not there yet because of the renovations that have been here. And it's not separated land and building, it's just total value.
Right, so far it's all together, right, we have a, an insurance replacement value. And this is one of those values I spoke about earlier, that, you know, if we use that value consistently across all the schools. We have a relative comparison. And that shows as seven point two million, seven million one ninety-one, five eighty-three.
And that for replace, for insurance purposes, it's.
Everything, contents, building.
Right, but it's building only, not actual land.
It's not the land.
Right.
So when Berlin did their townwide reassessment in two thousand eight, the school wasn't done at that point in two thousand?
So we haven't received information from the town offices yet, Berlin and Middlesex are the two town offices that haven't sent in their assessor values.
So you're thinking that they might be available, but we haven't received them?
We haven't received them, they, we were told they only work on Wednesdays and. It's taking a couple of weeks to get it, so we could use a little help maybe and making sure we get that information.
Okay, well, that would be something I could do.
All you have to do is ask for the assessor's card and send us the copy of it.
Which, the whole town was reassessed in two thousand eight, so it should be, I mean, I realize it's still ten years old, but it's still something to look at.
That's what we're trying to do is get all the cards. I mean, that was part of the project. Let's get all the,
Yeah.
everything that's owned by, within the supervisory union entities and get all the cards for everything.
And we talked earlier about Champlain Valley or,
Yep.
Chittenden southeast or whatever it is. That information would be, is gonna be valuable to us.
No, I'm glad you reminded me, Peter. I'll make sure I made a checklist that tomorrow we just send out. I, I have it right in my email. I know exactly.
Apparently is a viable model.
Well, they looked at budgets and they also looked at, they had some districts that had a lot of deferred maintenance and some that had just been renovated.
Yeah. Which is kind of what we're up against. So it's, it's a puzzle, but that's where we are.
So in the end, now that you guys have something to go by, when you're taking the assets and the liabilities, do you feel like we're all pretty equal across the board? Cause I mean, other schools that maybe have deferred maintenance have some larger fund balances. Do you feel like they're somewhat close or they weigh?
I don't think they're, I don't think, I think this could be very difficult to equalize. There are some suggested formulas out there to, to try to do that. And I, I think there are probably as many opinions as there are people on this committee. And, and I think that's probably why we were asked for three different scenarios. So, I, I think it's almost impossible to, to equalize them. And probably that's why the, the board, state board is saying, you know, it really goes in the pot and, but because of, you know, recent bonds and, and these bonds extend out over seventeen years, I think.
Longest one, yeah, yours is the longest to go. It has three payments have been paid at the end of this year.
That, that is another moving, moving part. So, we're gonna try to come up with something. And I don't have any, the WCSU board when they have to, try to, try to plug that in somewhere, but I think it's worth trying to do, really do. And, you know, it could be moved because it could be, the, the, the Board of Education may say, we don't care. Or we're not willing to entertain this amendment.
So you're talking about amendments to the article, Articles of Agreement?
Of consolidation.
I thought that was very clearly shut down already.
It did. In the draft articles, it says that Article Five, the debt cannot be changed.
So we could come to some kind of agreement, but it would be an agreement among the schools. It's not, it's not an article. It's not legally binding.
Right. See, this is the, the thing is you have to pass the muster of what is conforms with statute.
But at least they, I think at, at least this serves to give us an idea of the assets and liabilities, which I think is important for the towns to understand.
Well, I think if nothing else, it'll help us in explaining it to, to the voters.
On the Articles Committee and Bill or Matthew can correct me if I get any of this wrong, because I wasn't at the last one. It was on election day, so I, I wasn't able to go. Election night, I should say. The committee has been looking at the default Articles of Agreement. The committee ranked them in order of, easiest to deal with, most difficult to deal with. And then at the last meeting, it looks like they all started going through some of those Articles of Agreement to get at, at least a draft and try to knock off some of the, some of the easier articles to hand to the transition board.
Yep.
Is that where it'll go next? And so, I don't know, Bill, could you mind giving up maybe a quick summary of, the work from the last meeting?
Yeah, I mean, we started with those easiest ones. So some of them like, what are the towns that are part of? I mean, that was one of the easy ones. What are the schools, the school districts that are part of it? And we, I think got seven or eight of, because there's some subparts of each, so there's thirteen articles, but there's some, some parts. So I want to say I have about twenty. We did seven, seven or eight and went pretty quickly and we, I think we stopped right when it was gonna start. Okay, you know, there were ones that would take like three or four minutes. Holly could put in the notes what the suggested changes were and they're, they're more fill in the blank.
Yeah.
Type articles. I think we're just starting to get to the ones that are gonna take a little more discussion.
And there were some, some questions about to what extent certain articles could be amended and I think you got a response from,
From Donna Russo Savage. Where the, the agency interpreted that and that was sent out to the committee members.
Okay.
And to the timelines and what's.
And we're meeting again tomorrow night.
Yes.
Any questions? Anything else?
I think you got it. Oh, you had asked, the board had asked about property transfer.
Yes.
Because of what you had heard Barry had done. I just wanted to let you know, I talked to John Pandolfo. Took him three years to separate the land from, to the town, to give it back to the town and it wasn't so much the willingness of the select board or the willingness of the school board. It was the time it took to go through all the attorneys and land transfers and surveying and all of that. I don't imagine it would take us three years. I think that sounds a little long even in my mind, but I don't think it's something that's done in three months.
I know some other, other towns are considering it and I'm just reaching out to try to get some more information also, just to see what's involved and what the timelines would look like. I know it's not a short process.
Yeah, the first thing is just getting a title search, which usually when you go to sell a house, it's what, four weeks for a title search?
Yeah, it's usually a while.
And that's one step of many in there. I haven't even thought of what all the steps are. It's not that, if you need more time, I'd have to research it some more with one of our attorneys.
Theoretically, a title search should not be an issue here because the land was donated to the school, for school purposes and it hasn't changed hands since then.
In theory, I, when I, theory and practical when it comes to these things are, can be the same or sometimes not.
Any questions?
No.
Discussion?
I think, I think as we have our town forums, I do think that question should, is going to come up.
Definitely will come up.
And I don't wanna speak for Carl, but I think getting his input, because I think he's the one that brought it up at our last board meeting.
He did. And we, and we have had contacts from the mall developer visionary, whatever you want to call it, has reached out to me a couple of times to inquire about coming to speak to the board about it. They are interested in some of the property, perhaps a land swap. For some of the, some of the land bordering the mall property. And again, just, you know, spinning out hypotheticals, if, if in the future the, the mall developers want to buy some of that land and it belongs to the district, not to the town anymore. I know we can trust, we can imagine that that benefit will endure to the town of Berlin, but it really is to the district at that point. So I think we still have a responsibility to take a look at that.
I do. And I think that question will come up from the townspeople to, whether it's an option or not and explain whatever the timeline might be or what that would look like with doing that, even if it didn't happen during this board, how to move forward. That could be something that happens. Not even with the transitional board, but the newly formed board.
So I don't wanna put more work on, on Bill on this. I don't know if you have any easy way to obtain what those, what those steps look like and what a timeline would, would look like? But if not, I've got a couple of feelers out with people who I think will be able to answer those questions. What the steps involved would be, you know, what, what the time, timeframe would have to be. So we can have a better sense of what's involved, even if that's just to be able to tell the Berlin voters that this is something that would take a while. It might not be feasible.
I do have a question about the mall developer. My understanding is they can't continue with their project until they have the right of way land swapped, agreed upon. Like if that doesn't go through, they no longer have, they're not within their right of way with the development project they have projected to do there. Am I correct?
I don't, I don't know that for sure. But I, I could invite the, someone from that group to come and talk to us.
I'm not sure that we wanna bring another egg into the basket until we figure out the other pieces.
Yep, I can ask them about that.
But it just makes it very different if they cannot do that project without some kind of a.
They need additional right of way involving school property?
Yeah. I, and that's my understanding is with what they have planned right now, what they need to swap land isn't necessarily to build on, but it's part of the right of way that they would need. But that, it's more of a question. I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Yeah. I can, I can reach out to them and see what they're willing to come and talk to us about in a, in a public forum. I don't know if they'll want to or not. But if they are willing, we can see what they're, what they're thinking is right now, just to have that information.
Do they have a local rep at this point?
They, they do, yeah.
So to answer your question that you had before, I can't remember which partner, Scott Cameron's it is, but I would get to that partner who deals in real estate, because we've used them before. And just say, tell me the steps and what would they be, because you're gonna wanna know what does the municipal government need to have as well.
Right.
That's, the problem is you're getting to, in a private transfer, it's a lot faster than a public transfer. I didn't, I mean, this was a two-minute conversation with John Pandolfo. I said, just tell me how long. This was last Friday, we were having lunch together. I said, tell me how long. He goes, it took us three years. And he said it was just, he said, it was getting the public boards together, because there's different places where there's sign offs, just as you can think about bond. We won't done the building project here. And he said it took us three years.
And I don't know to what extent Barry would be, you know, the specifics would be different from what we're.
No, I don't either. I don't either and.
Has anybody had the conversation with a select board member about the town retaining that property? Has that conversation even happened?
And I will tell you at the Middlesex meeting last week, the Middlesex, a Middlesex board member, I don't wanna say the board, because I wanna make sure to, I only heard it from one person, expressed interest about talking about community access, access as being parts of an additional article. Which I would say, for, for me sitting in the chair I'm in right now, to deny community access to the school buildings is not a good, is not a smart move to make. I can't imagine someone sitting in my chair and doing that, but you want your community and your schools.
Yeah.
Someone was concerned that they might have limited access to their home school.
Because it might become, become a, because it's one big district. I said, I, I would support you in that. I mean, I think you wanna say you want the community using your facilities. Just as long as we do it in a safe and appropriate way, let's do it.
Right.
I mean.
So I do have a quick question, it's kind of off the subject, but I'll make it quick and short. So if somebody came with a preschooler that was just preschool age, but not in our preschool program and wanted to come in and be in the library during the day, they have access to come into the library with an adult with them at this point. Is that correct?
It's never come up, but I would say that it wouldn't be any different than if people wanted to come and use the playground during the day. I would typically say no, I mean, I don't know what the intent of this library was at, at the onset. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't be comfortable just people milling around and, and using the, the library during school time, just as I wouldn't have people wandering around out back during recess. But the intent for this library is to be used whenever by the community, whenever, during the school day. But I'd be hesitant too, to be honest. I mean, we have people, we have kids here, you know, and you don't know who's coming in. You might think, well, it's, it's paired with a preschooler, it sounds very innocent, but you don't know what that person's gonna do. You know, you, you don't know what they're gonna hear or, or, or anything. It's just tricky.
It's a school library, it's not a public library.
For me, it gets into the place of pupil privacy. You know, it's the piece of the kids have their right to their privacy and how they're being educated. And one of the things that's hard to do in small communities is when students have certain needs, it's trying to keep that protected for kids and that tends to open it up. It's a delicate balance. It's a balance of, you know, parents and volunteers in the building. It's, it's all of that.
It's, it's unique having an open area like this. Comes with these challenges, of course, but.
Some, some schools, some schools have their school library. Is there a public library for their town? And so they've actually had to make sure that when it's the public library, there aren't kids in there. I live in a town that has that, so there are hours for adults outside of the school day for the adults to access the library. And there's a separate entrance that sometimes it gets closed off during the day.
Same with go for like using the gym. It's like, well, you know, I'll come with my kids during the day that are, you know, younger than, or pre-K age and use the gym. It just gets a little bit tricky.
Well, plus this is the learning center, right? I mean, it's not just the libraries, learning centers, all the activities and classes in here as well.
It'd be any different than allowing a teacher or a, a parent with their kid to go, you know, into a classroom whenever they want to. I mean, this is a classroom. In a sense. People, it might be uncomfortable, I don't know.
Well, if you can get a, a, a quick summary from a lawyer who specializes in that, I think that would help us. I appreciate that, Bill.
And hope we don't come under Act two fifty for any.
Subdevelopments, probably would.
Minor subdivision, one block.
And I will reach out to the mall developer rep who contacts me every once in a while to see if he's willing to come and talk to us and what the status of their intent, intentions might be at this point in time.
Would that be a legitimate, you mentioned a concern, you might have a concern, they might have a concern about public forum. Is that an executive committee?
No, not an issue or in contract negotiations, I believe.
Unless we were negotiating a real estate deal.
Not quite there yet.
Yeah. Then we could go into executive session for that. The last item that I have under Act forty-six is the Act forty-six lawsuit that we voted to join a couple of meetings back. And what they're asking from me is to sign off on a letter of engagement for the group to, in anticipation of possible litigation. I think I just addressed you at one of our previous meetings that there was a gathering of potential plaintiffs for the Act forty-six lawsuit. It's a group of attorneys who are acting pro bono as well as some being paid, but they're being paid from a fund and donations. So I guess the important things to point out here are that there's nothing obligating us to stay in the lawsuit and there's nothing that would require any payment from us to be a part of this lawsuit. And so they're asking board chairs to sign off on this letter of engagement. Other boards have voted to join the lawsuit and then the board chairs have signed on right after that apparently. And I just wanna make sure that that's still the understanding of the board members here tonight, that we agreed to, to join this lawsuit and that you're okay with me signing on as board chair to do that.
And would we be notified if, if the equation changed and, and charges would be forthcoming? That would be another agreement?
I would, I would say so. There, the, this letter of engagement says there will be no charges to the board. I would, I would say so, there, the, this letter of engagement says there will be no charges, um, to the board.
I would move that we accept that, or that we authorize Chris to sign for us.
Okay, is there a second?
I will second, and just to make sure you've read through that, Chris.
Yes.
You feel comfortable signing it, no charges to us?
Yes.
There's nothing else, that's a red flag for you?
No, it's very, um, flexible, there's no real obligation on our part, we can withdraw it anytime. This doesn't say anything about, um, no individual school board or select board is asked to guarantee that any part of these bills get paid. We're asking that plaintiffs and their supporters do their best to make contributions to the defense fund, um, and all payment comes out of that defense fund.
So I, I stand with seconding the motion, I would just suggest that we bring it back up at our December meeting when Carl is here, so if we decide at that point to withdraw, we can. But I do feel like he's part of our board now that, it would be nice to. He was. A continued part of that decision, instead of just the three of them.
Bill, do you know of any legal problems, anything we should be aware of in signing onto this?
I have stayed away from this, so I can't advise you in any way. I don't believe it's my role to advise you on this.
Very good. All right, so I'll send that back in, oh, the motion was made and seconded, um, any further discussion?
Just my other comment. Let's bring it back up at December, so if we choose to withdraw at that point.
Okay. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, and the ayes have it, and the motion carries. Anything else on Act forty-six? All right, four point O, reports to the board, administration, that's on page twenty of our packet.
Here's my principal's report, but there's a few things I wanted to talk about in that report, um, hopefully you had a chance to look at it. I wanted to mention first, um, that one of the things that I've been doing with the staff here is something called collective commitments. And these are really, um, a list of, of values that we'll hold each other to. These are things that we worked on together towards the beginning of this year, um, that we'll, that we hold ourselves accountable for. And doing this work together is just really, it's a really powerful thing when you, when you experience it, um, where everybody has some voice. And, uh, just collaboratively coming together to come up with a set of, of values and things that we commit to. So, a lot of the things that, I won't read the whole list, but, um, things like communicate, collaborate, role modeling, growing and changing, accepting responsibility for all students. Embracing the whole child approach, um, modeling perseverance, taking risks, uh, being honest, open-minded, being professional, professional and flexible. These kinds of things that we seek in each other, uh, but also hold each other accountable for. So I just wanted to share these, this list with you, just so you can see, uh, some of the things that as a staff we, we talked about, um, and that we feel strongly. As we move forward in our work together, um, it's gonna be pretty powerful to keep coming back to those, those commitments. Jump in at any time with questions. One of the things that we had recently here at this, at Berlin is a, a Vermont Feeds and Farm to School press event. We had a lot of folks come from, uh, different agencies and, and, uh, different organizations. And, uh, we all gathered in the, the garden area, um, and went through a number of different, uh, um. Celebrations and just things about our school garden, about farm to school, and, uh, Channel Five News did come into a bit of a story for us. And, uh, um, there's some things out there on Facebook that were, are really positive, highlighting a lot of the great things that we do here with, with our garden, and just how kids get involved. And, uh, some of the educational pieces behind it, so, really good stuff, and we were happy to have hosted this, this event. Out of any school in Vermont, we were the ones that they wanted to come to, so that was really great. A couple of other things further down my reports, just a couple of celebrations, um, some of you might know this, but Kim Ferrone, who is our math teacher and interventionist, or math coach and, and interventionist. Was nominated for the two thousand eighteen Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. So she was chosen, there were, there were two folks that were chosen from Vermont, and, um, she was recognized recently at a, a math conference. So I think we're still waiting to hear if she'll go to the national level, but it's pretty cool that, uh, she was recognized for the work that she does here. You know, we continue to do a lot of work around our, our positive behavior and support, you know, we have a lot of things that, that hopefully are communicated strongly to, to everybody about, uh, some of the celebrations that we, that we do, some of the recognitions. One of the things that we do here at, at Berlin is something called Community Bobcats. And students that are recognized for going above and beyond, uh, in ways that serve the greater good. We, we, we share those recognition school-wide, uh, students get a, a, a button or a pin. And then I contact parents that they, that their child received a Community Bobcat recognition, um, just how proud we are of them for, for stepping up and, and, and going above and beyond. So, we really have a lot of kids that, uh, obviously are, are, um, recognized for this. So, just wanted to share a little bit more about some of the things that we do here. Been having parent-teacher conferences these last couple of weeks, one of the things that I've asked teachers is to report to me on how many parents actually attend. And I don't have everybody's attendance yet, there are still some evening conferences that'll probably happen this week, so. For the next, the next board meeting, I'll, I'll share that with you on, uh, our percentage of attendance. And, uh, even in the spring, do, do, do the same to see what, uh, what the involvement for that looks like. Couple of other events that are coming up that I just wanted to, to note, we have our harvest dinner this week, which is an annual lunch event where parents can come and, uh, have a wonderful meal with the whole school. Looking forward to that this week. At the end of the month, we are actually hosting a, a, a benefit for Julia Chase. It's a bingo benefit, so what we're gonna do is, this is all school, school-initiated. It's gonna be five dollars per, per card, uh, for a chance to win some prizes, we'll have refreshments, and, uh, staff, um, are gonna be helping run this, uh, event for, for the Chase family. So, um, hope to see folks there, can play some bingo, that's on the thirtieth. Couple of other cool things, so we initiated this year a Berlin school clothing apparel line, if you will. And, uh, with PTNA's help, um, any, any money that's raised to offset, you know, that, that is, um, through the, through, after the purchase of the, um, um, the clothing, will go to PTNA. There's a, there's a link on our webpage, I have a link here in the report, and, uh, there's some really, really great items that, that, uh, families can, can, can get for their, their kids, or themselves. Or even if there's community members out there that want something that just says Berlin on it, uh, it'd be really cool to.
Teeter maybe a scarf or a headband, there's some really nice, nice stuff on there.
Send up to Mike and see you at, at the next meeting.
Selection of, of different kinds of things. Actually got a, that golf shirt for my dad, so I, you know, a little bit extra that you might wanna do for the family for Christmas time, and, um.
Are they soccer scarves, like the soccer, you know, for the soccer team, like they.
I think that's.
Big MLS and World Cup teams.
Okay, uh, it's kinda, it's good.
Kinda like that.
Spectator scarf.
That looks like it, that looks like one, yeah, yeah.
There we go.
Yeah, so that's really cool, um, you know, in terms of, uh, just boosting community or school spirit, well, and, and community spirit. It's just a great way to, to show, show our colors and, and show our school name on, on clothing, so. So, we're doing this for the month of November, the orders will come in, and then, you know, we'll go back up in the, in the spring. In terms of, uh, just a couple of maintenance things, we had some, some trees that were removed this fall, uh, we had a gentleman come in that, uh, I guess has been, been doing this here for awhile that we've been consulting with. And just noticed some, some trees that were, um, definitely needing removal, um, some that were a safety issue, but some that were just definitely dying and needed removal. So I think there were six that we, uh, that we removed. Another thing that has come up recently is, is our refrigeration unit in the kitchen, um, we've had repairs over the last few years. And, uh, just thinking that it might be time to, to think about some of the bigger, um, cooling units in, in the refrigerator for the, you know, the walk-in. Obviously not replacing the whole shell and the whole casing, but just the refrigeration machi, you know, uh, machinery parts. So I'll keep you guys updated on that, um, the big one, obviously, in terms of maintenance, the driveway, something that I definitely support. If we were to, before with that, uh, Chuck's doing his best to patch the holes with patch, um. And, you know, one thing that I, I don't know if this is something I mentioned before, but, um, at my previous school, the town was able to get a wastewater grant, I don't know if I mentioned this, but. To help, um, with water flow in the school parking lot, driveway parking lot. And, uh, um, it allowed us to have to repave most of the parking lot through this grant, which, you know, addressed rates and some other drainage kinds of things. Might be something to look into, considering we have a bit of a wet spot that is out as you're coming in, that where the driveway kinda dips down, it seems to be kinda marshy through there, so. I'd be curious to see if we might be able to get or do something through some sort of, um, grant because of that issue, it seems to be direct correlation with, with water, um, pooling there, so. Might be something to, to think about.
And you also have the wetland out beyond the actual parking lot.
Right, right, what Chuck might understand is we can't touch that driveway, that parking lot because of the wetlands, but I don't, that's what, that's what everybody tells me.
It's been on previous budgets for, for paving, but I think you can, it's just a matter of how, what it takes to do it.
Yeah, there's so many square feet, I was actually just in this conversation this morning at U thirty-two, there's a certain amount of square footage that you have impervious on your land, and then you get to different, uh, stormwater runoff regulation. And at U thirty-two, they're at it, uh, it's gotten smaller in the past couple of years, the number of square feet, and so you have to treat on-site your waste, your stormwater runoff. Which usually just means a settling pond, but.
And then just the last thing, it's not my report, but just, uh, kinda thinking about some of the budget discussion, um, we've been having, and. Obviously, you know, really taking the time to get a sense of how things operate here, you know, in just a few months. As I learn and absorb more about the workings of the school, you know, looking at, 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 uh, previous budgets. Seeing just the structure of, of, of things when it comes right down to even schedules, and, you know, who does what, who's licensed to, to do what. And we, we, we've definitely been, been talking about math as a, an area of need. So even though we only have draft one, you know, I definitely have some ideas for, for how we can tackle this, this math instructional, um, problem that we have here. So this is a big area, and as we look at budgets for the future, uh, just, I have some ideas. And, uh, look forward to sharing that with you at some point as well. Some other things in regards to, uh, the budget that I've, I've gathered from folks is, uh, you know, some things, as we, as we talk about not only academic needs, but, um. Needs around trauma, um, and, you know, looking at all aspects of, of taking care of kids. Programs around social emotional learning is something that, um, I think is also needed, I'm sure we'll have some discussions at the, at the admin level at some point as well, but. There's some things in that area that I think we could, we could strengthen here at, at Berlin. And, uh, you know, other kinds of things that, uh, are more curriculum-based around science, you know, I'm, have a bit of a science background in my educational career, so. I do support the teaching of science pretty strongly, um, and we have some outdated things, you know, we've done some scavenging in the attic, and there's definitely some old stuff up there that's no longer useful. Some that is, but as we've been working to incorporate the, uh, the new science standards, um, teachers are saying, I need certain science materials, and we just don't have it, so. If I were to advocate for any bigger areas, those would be ones that, uh, are. Running through my mind as I get to know how things are working around here, so. Just wanna know if you have any questions for my report, or just anything else about what's been going on here at school?
I'd like to know what kinda pie you use.
Uh, it'll probably just be whipped cream. Yeah, the, uh, you know, in regards to these, uh, uh, recognitions that we have, um. The principal challenges I think the kids really like, and the next one's gonna be a pie, pies in the face, so. We will, actually, it's next, uh, next, next, next week, Tuesday. We'll pick some random kids to. Get in the face with the pie, so.
More power to you.
All right, lots of good stuff there, Aaron, thank you, any questions?
I have a question, uh, on whether we will have an opportunity or wanna take an opportunity to implement some of Aaron's budget suggestions. Math, in particular, for our next. Our next budget, our next proposed budget.
No, we will, Aaron and I were talking about, this is a list that I've heard from, I heard from him past week, and I said, well, we're bringing a level service this time. When we come in December, we'll have price tags for those pieces that he just talked about, so I asked him tonight to come and tell you the pieces. Deliberately, we haven't costed them out yet, we wanted to hear back your feedback on this, and then we'll bring those pieces, and, and what does that cost, so you'll get that piece in December.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Finance report?
So on page twenty-three, uh, I pointed this out earlier, but, uh, there really hasn't been any change, things are moving along the way they, uh, pretty much plan to. You are, you know, your, the total fund balance is two hundred and forty-eight thousand, almost two hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven percent. That's about a hundred and nine thousand over the four percent target. I would like to ask that, and, and I think it's right for December to put some of that into the capital fund, if not all. And that, that, we might put that on the action agenda for the next meeting. Uh, your capital, I gave you the quick piece on construction when we were going through earlier, so I'm giving you a very short, I'd be glad to talk anything, and don't take my brevity as not wanting to talk about it. But, you know, we're closing down the construction, and we'll have your capital fund, and while it's at almost a hundred and eighty-four thousand, there'll be another sixty-three hundred going in that from the interest earned off the bond project.
Any questions for Bill on the finance report? Executive Committee?
For the portion I was there, um, Bill had proposed the budget draft one, which was at the one point nine six percent. The conversation came up about, um. Having. Addressed, addressed one of our goals, um, as a WCSU board. With adding another math coach within the district, and how that would look within each school. And the other conversation was brought up about what is the appropriate fund balance, which Bill already kinda talked about that, and him working towards what is that right number as. Looking, gathering the information that's needed to provide us with what that number is, or what that percentage is, and that's really all I had time.
That was basically the meeting?
To me.
Yeah.
So it was a, it's under two percent, I think, um, it was a level service budget that was brought to, so. I didn't hear any other questions or comments come up from other members, so it was pretty clear, pretty cut and dry.
Thank you. Is there any update from the Policy Committee?
Policy Committee didn't meet, they're not meeting till December.
And the School Quality Committee, is that you there as well?
We meet next week.
This Thursday.
This Thursday.
All right, and negotiations?
That's fair, as while we met.
We met, so I've actually gone to three, two of the meetings we've had. We met, so I've actually gone to three, two of the meetings, we've had three. The last one, I actually went, but had something come up, so I had to leave before I actually went inside. So I missed the one that was on the eighth, which was last week. And that was just Board members coming up with a list of common.
Issues, yeah.
Which I'm assuming I just got my packet, so.
You just got your packet, that's not the actual issue list, it's on top, chatty row one in the form of questions. There were eight or ten issues, and issues have been exchanged between the boards and the association.
And there's a lot of meetings coming up in January, February. So I'll keep you posted.
Twenty-six, this is the first negotiation meeting, only the twenty-sixth.
Thank you. We can move on to our action agenda. Five point one is appoint a board member. We do not have anyone to appoint, so we'll skip over that one. Five point two was appoint a vice chair. I think we had forgotten about that at our last meeting, that Eric Chase, I believe, was the vice chair, so. Looking for volunteers. Peter, is that something you'd be willing to, in the event that I cannot fulfill my duties as chair, you'd be willing to?
This is as distinct from the clerk.
Oh, so you're the clerk.
Right.
I'm the clerk.
Beer is the clerk. You're the, are you a treasurer? No, we don't have a treasurer, we don't have a secretary? No.
I'm the clerk, so I think.
Right, so my thought was that the chair and the clerk would become the temporary members under the new configuration.
That is.
So the chair is just to stand in if you are not available.
That's right.
Yeah, I can do it.
So I'll make a motion for Peter to be vice chair.
Okay, I'll second.
You'll have to second.
Those, any discussion? He said all he has to say on that. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. And the ayes have it, and congratulations on your appointment. Approve board orders.
I can give you the amount if you'd like. There's two figures on this, so I added them together. One hundred seven thousand, five hundred sixty-three and forty-seven cents.
I had seventy-three. Did I write it down wrong?
It was seventy-nine thousand, nine thirty-six, ninety-seven.
Yep.
Plus twenty-seven thousand, six thirty-six and fifty cents.
Yeah, it's seventy-three. Right?
Yes, you're right, seventy-three, yes.
Gary, would you make a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion for the one hundred and seven thousand, five seventy-three, forty-seven.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. And we've approved the board orders.
Thank you for checking my math.
I'm not the math guy, for sure.
Usually am, but not now.
Future agenda items, so Bill, you've asked, we put capital, potential capital fund transfer on there. If possible, I will have a mall property update. Potentially someone will come and talk to us, potentially not. Of course, we'll have budget items.
Talk now.
Budget on there. I think we should have an item to discuss communications around Act forty-six and the budget at our next meeting on December fifth, and determine what we want to put out there.
Oh, you mean at the Carousel meeting? I was thinking the tenth, but.
Oh, I apologize.
I think that's just an SU meeting.
Fifth is a SU meeting, so maybe December tenth. Right, December tenth is our local board meeting. Any other future agenda items?
I don't think this has to be put on, like, any time soon, but I think feedback, maybe, and Bill probably would have this, as to what conversations other boards are having about moving the sports to a rec committee versus leading in school. Because I think it was one of those, either we all move, or we all stay at status quo, is probably the feeling, I guess. So maybe just an update on that as to what conversations other boards are having.
Sure.
I really don't know of any.
Okay.
Any other conversations?
That's right. I know where Calis feels, because they just did this a year or two ago, moved it back.
Moved it back.
But I'm not saying that they still do either. I just, that's all I know.
If you have any of these.
If I hear any, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Of course, we'll have our standing Act forty-six, where we can discuss, I think, property. Bill will have some more information, hopefully for us at the next meeting. Any other agenda items?
I wanted to say on the school versus rec, it may take someone like Phil to, I don't know how much he's been involved, but he said ten years, so it may take him going school to school to see what level of interest there is today and to come back to us. I don't, I don't know. It's not going to happen any other way.
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure.
I have no idea.
I'll just be really brutally honest, I haven't put any energy into it.
No, and you shouldn't.
And I've not seen you do that, and I shouldn't, I don't see you telling me to do that, I'm just letting you know.
No, I'm just asking if you hear of any other conversations.
If I hear stuff, I'll let you know, but I'm not really, and I'm not, as I said at the beginning, I'm not wed one way or the other. I just tried to point out areas that need to be advised of as a board. And I wasn't trying to do that to dissuade.
I think let's get an update if there is any other conversations that's happening. That's all I'm asking of Bill. And at that point, if that will either progress us to make another future agenda item to have more conversation about it, or not.
Okay. Good. Any board communication that the board feels should be going out between now and our next meeting on December tenth? I mean, I'll put a notice out there again for seeking a board member to fill the vacancy, but other than that, I wasn't planning on putting anything out before then.
I think we need to put something out after our December meeting about the Act forty-six stuff, but again, that's above the way.
We'll have an agenda item on there for that.
Yep.
Good. Anything else? All right, then, thank you, everybody. We'll turn at seven fifty.